Twenty at seven P M via WebEx. The prayer will be offered by the City Clerk Sue Lovering and Alderman Brandon Laws will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with the serene, with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
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 All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you Deputy Clerk Nicole Reyes. I forgot you were going to be leading us with the prayer this evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, as President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access WebEx, please refer to the city's, to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. Join by phone dial one four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight, the meeting number and access code seven one two seven five nine six six four. If for some reason you cannot connect to WebEx, please contact us at six oh three eight two one two zero four nine, and they will help you with connectivity. The public may also view the meeting via channel sixteen. B, we are providing, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall, Public Health Department, and the National Telegraph. We've provided a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel sixteen, please call six oh three eight two one two zero four nine, and they will help you connect. We would adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken, taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Please also let us know if you can be heard and why you're not able to meet in person. Nicole?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present, I can hear the proceedings. I am alone and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes, I am here. I can hear the proceedings. I'm practicing social distancing, and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here. I am alone. I am practicing social distancing, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am, can hear everyone. I am here alone, and I'm practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's directive.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone, and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone. I'm by myself, and I am on, staying home under the Governor's order.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I'm social distancing. I have nobody with me, and I can hear everything.
Muntanza.
I am present. I can hear everybody, and I am staying home per the Governor's order. And no one's in the room with me.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here, lo, hearing you well. I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear you, and I'm obeying the Governor's order to stay home.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings. I am alone, and I am following the directive for distancing.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I can hear you. I'm alone, and I am also following the directive for social distancing.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here. I'm alone, following social distancing.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present. I can hear you. I am in this room alone, and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Willshere.
I am here. I am alone, and I am practicing social distancing.
Fifteen members are present.
Thank you. Is the mayor, Mayor Ewan tonight?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton.
Attorney Clark is on.
Attorney Clark, okay, very good. And there are a number of other people that maybe we can have them introduce themselves so that we know they're here before I turn the meeting over to Alderman Dowd. Chief Rhodes. Chief?
Good evening. Yes, I am here. I am alone. I'm honored to be before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like David Boucher.
Yes, hi, Dave Boucher, wastewater superintendent, here for anybody. Thank you for having me.
Yep, Don Davidson.
Yes, I'm here. I can hear you, and I'm alone.
We have Dory Clark.
Yes, I'm here. Happy to participate in the meeting.
Thank you. We have Deputy Chief Walker.
I am here, and I can hear you, and I am alone.
And we have John Griffin. And I'm not sure if there's anyone else. If, if there is, can you identify yourselves, please?
Yeah. Alderman Willshere, this is David Fedett, City Treasurer.
Okay, thank you.
Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services.
Thank you.
Kevin Burgess, Fire Commissioner.
Hi there. Anyone else that hasn't been identified that's part of the meeting?
John McAllister. I'm, can hear you. I'm home, and I'm alone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, as is customary, I will turn this meeting over to the Chairman of the Budget Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Good evening, everyone. We have two public hearings this evening on two different subjects. We will not be taking a break between them, nor will we take, we'll take a five-minute break between the public hearing and the actual budget meeting. I'll be calling for testimony in favor and testimony in opposition twice. If somebody would like to speak, if you're on video, please raise your hand, and I'll see you and recognize you. If you're on the phone, please just state your name, and I'll try and, and catch you if many people are talking at the same time. So we'll get whoever would like to speak on, on either one of the items. When we leave the public hearing, we'll be going into the budget meeting, and then the only people that will be able to attend are the people from the Board of Aldermen. I, when we include the public hearing before we get in the budget meeting, if you have any lingering questions for Attorney Clark, Treasurer Fedett, or Mr. Griffin, they may not be staying for the entire regular budget meeting, so if you have a question, please ask them so that they can sign off. So the first, the first item is R twenty zero four zero, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to borrow from the new New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services State Revolving Loan Fund an additional amount not to exceed $2,500,000 for pump station upgrades. Is there anyone that is going to speak to that for us from the city? Someone going to present what we're doing with this motion?
That should be the Superintendent of Wastewater. This is our David Fedett.
Yes. Lieutenant, please let us know the extent of, of what we're doing with this particular bond.
Yes, this is David Boucher. I don't know if you can see me, but Wastewater Superintendent. This bond, currently we have a sewer pump station upgrade project. The project consists of upgrading thirteen sewer pump stations throughout the city of Nashua. This, most of the pump stations were built in the nineteen sixties and have exceeded their useful life. So we're doing complete rehabs on all of them. Some are receiving new buildings. All are receiving new pumps. Some that didn't have buildings are receiving buildings. Some only had one pump. Now they're receiving backup pumps. So this is taking place currently. We have six being upgraded currently as part of Phase One. And we have a Phase Two. This one should be complete around September. We're getting ready to start, you know, going out to bid for Phase Two, which would be the remainder of the pump stations. So this resolution is for additional monies. The project initially started, it was in the works in two thousand fifteen, so I, I think the money kind of changed over time. The need for more money changed over time as expenses increased. So this resolution would help us borrow more money from the state to cover the cost of Phase Two.
Okay, thank you, and
if you have any.
Treasurer Fedett, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I didn't really have anything. I'm probably had a question, but as the Superintendent, Superintendent stated, this is a loan from the state, not a bond. The, the requirements is a lot, it's a lot easier than going through a bond process, but we do have quite a few loans through the state for wastewater.
Okay. Any of the Aldermen that would like a clarifying question before we get started in the public testimony? Alderman Lou?
Thank you, Chairman Dowd. Could you clarify for me? I may have, I just thought you, did you say the 2.5 million will include funds for Phase Two? You started out talking about Phase One, and then you mentioned Phase Two, so if I could just get clarification.
Mr. Bushy?
Yes, we had borrowed enough money for part of Phase Two. It wasn't enough. We need to borrow an additional 2.5 million. We're expecting Phase Two to cost like around 6.1, 6.2 million. So we need the additional 2.5.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, so you're currently in Phase Two?
No, we're currently in Phase One. Phase One should be complete around September. That's the first six pump station.
Okay. And what is the interest rate that the state charges?
That's listed in the bond resolution. It's two percent.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, any other questions before we get going in public testimony? Seeing none, I'd now take testimony in favor of R twenty zero four zero. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Hearing and seeing no one, is there anyone that would like to provide testimony in opposition to R twenty zero four zero? Seeing and hearing no one, once again, I will ask for testimony in favor of R twenty zero four zero. Hearing and seeing none, I'll now ask for testimony in opposition again for R twenty zero four zero. Hearing and seeing none, I will now close the public hearing on R twenty zero four zero. The next item for public hearing is R twenty zero four one, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the mayor and the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashville, New Hampshire, and Local Number Seven Eighty-Nine International Association of Firefighters from July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorizing related transfer and supplemental appropriation. Who from the city would like to present the city's point of view on this?
This is Chairman Davidson. I would ask and yield to the chief, and I'll make comments afterwards. Thank you.
Chief Rhodes.
Okay, I'm trying to, there we go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you. No one, no one knew we would be facing the pandemic or the situation that we're in. I have faithfully served this city for over thirty-three years. And in those thirty-three years, it has never been a good time for the firefighter. The firefighters have historically, first, let me back up, full transparency. I paid union dues to Local Seven Eighty-Nine for twenty-nine and a half years. I no longer pay union dues. I, I, I rode the fire trucks they ride on. I crawled down the hallways they crawl down. I do the safe station calls they do today that we started three and a half, almost four years ago. This contract negotiations was not easy. We did not roll over as a city. We did not roll over as a fire, a fire administration. And there was some, there was some healthy dialogue along the way. The letter that you all received from Fire Private Michael O'Brien, Jr. was very factual. Extremely factual. The firefighters of Local Seven Eighty-Nine are not looking for parity with our brothers and sisters of the National Police Department. They're looking to close the gap. And that document that you got clearly has spelled out the disparities and the differences between all levels of both organizations. Now, both organizations, and again, I, I am in no way, shape, or form speaking against our police department because we have the best police department in, in New England. We have the best fire department in New England. I, I didn't want to bring this up at this point because it's not really factual, but I'm going to because I think you need to hear this as a Board of Aldermen. So the management study that you approved for our organization has been sidetracked a little bit. But through that process, the lead for Emergency Services Consulting International, one of the things they do is they look at, they look at our past studies, and they look at our past ISO ratings, which determines business insurance rates. We have been an ISO Class Two fire department for as, as long as I've been here. Again, I am not 100% sure, but I'm 99% sure that in a very short time, we are going to be the first fire department in the state of New Hampshire that is going to be an ISO Class One fire department. And, and that's pretty big because there are less than 300 fire or rescue organizations in the entire country who have achieved that level. And we, and, and we, we got to this, and we found this through the study that you so graciously approved to help us determine the needs of our fire department going forward based upon the growth of our organization. Again, I am not guaranteeing that. I'm in full transparency. We're, we're 99% sure this is going to happen in very short order to the contract. Again, we did not roll over as a city negotiating team. The Board of Fire Commissioners, Attorney Clark was there through all of it. Financial Services Rose Evans was there through much of this. But it isn't all just a gift. The fire union made some pretty good concessions, and I'm going to highlight three of them. So if you would, please excuse me, I'm going to just read from the paper I have so I don't misquote what is in this tentative agreement. Currently, our dispatchers are paid time and a half overtime for every minute after their scheduled time, which means they work, they work varying schedules because of the rotation. So they could be thirty-four, thirty-eight, forty-eight hours a week. The way the current contract was written, if they work thirty-four hours, they would get overtime for hour thirty-five at time and a half. We were able through negotiations to come to an agreement with, with Local Seven Eighty-Nine that we brought that to forty hours. But that forty hours is just like the firefighters, and that is feet-on-the-floor time, which means they have to come to work. If you, if you take a sick day, if you take a vacation day, you have to make up those hours before you get into the time and a half overtime. That's a big concession. In this contract, we negotiated for, and this is what, this is, the city wanted this, the fire administration wanted this, the fire commissioner wanted this. When we got the three dispatchers in our fire alarm office, the two-person model and the three-person model currently, there, there is no defined outline supervisor in that room. Currently, we still have one trainer slash clerk for the fire alarm division. That means that one person is responsible for training all of the different and new employees we bring in. So just think about that. One person is responsible for, at the time, seven others. Now, excuse me, now eleven other people. So how do we get consistent training through these members? We have to keep moving people around. We have to keep, we, we have to keep adjusting schedules. So one of the things we did in this new contract was, and we've already tested for it, we've tested to create and eliminate the clerk dispatcher position and create a dispatch supervisor position, which would be similar to a lieutenant. So now we have a person in that room 24/7 who is responsible for decision-making, who is accountable, and it's not just peers, and I, and I, and I, I mean no disrespect to our dispatchers when I say this. This was peers working together. And the difference might have been seniority. So now, with this contract, we can have a supervisor in that room 24/7, which, which is safer for our community, it's safer for our firefighters, it's, it's safer all around. And the third major concession that Local Seven Eighty-Nine made was in our promotional process. Currently, you do not need any prerequisites other than one year on the fire department to test into the Fire Marshals Division. Through negotiations, we were able to secure that anyone starting on January first of two thousand twenty-one who aspires to be a member of the Fire Marshals Division must have Fire Inspector One and Fire Inspector certifications prior to taking the exam. Because what, what does that do? What does that mean for us? That means we are saving money now because we are not, we do not have to send someone out to achieve the certification to do that job. That was in the current contract. So I'm not going to belabor this point. I, I fully understand the current situation we're in. Again, we were in a blue-chip economy. We were in record-low unemployment. We were in record-low vacancy rates in the city of Nashua. The city of Nashua is exploding with building and developing, which is putting more work on, on the limited staff we have. And I'm going to bring it up, and I, because it has to come up. Our firefighters have done the Safe Station Program for four years for zero additional benefit. They've done a fantastic job. They have saved lives. And it's because of, of, of the great job they did. And they took this on, and they didn't ask for anything at the beginning because they knew we were in, we were in a problem. We had a huge problem as a city, and they took it on. So, I, I, again, I totally understand the situation we're in. I'm a taxpayer. I have been for many, many, many years. I plan on being one for many more years. But at the end of the day, I, I just, the question for me is, when is the right time to do the right thing with the national firefighters? So I, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I, 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 I'm truly passionate about this organization because this organization has been so good to me and my family. Again, we are a shining star in the New England region and far beyond. in the New England region and far beyond. And we are because we have support of our community and we have good employees who do a fantastic job for us every day, who are not looking, they're not looking to get anything they don't deserve because they fully deserve it. So I ask you, you have, you have a tough decision before you. I, again, I fully understand that. And I just ask you to please really think about the implications of, of this contract and think about the good things that your firefighters do in our community every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Davidson, did you want to add something to the chief's statements or do you want to wait till public comment?
Well, no, I probably, public comment probably be appropriate. If that fits, if that fits the system.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the city side that wants to comment? Okay. And unless somebody has an objection, I'm going to ask that the president of the National Fire Rescue, if he'd like to say anything at this point or wait till public comment.
Good evening, Chairman Dowd. If I could speak on this now, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
The chief hit a lot of the, the points right on. This contract has been negotiated. We've been in negotiations for this for over a year now. Local 789 sent a letter of intent to the city and we started negotiations back in March of 2019. It took that long because this local stood firm on some of the, the goals that we wanted to accomplish here. Those goals that we wanted to accomplish as the, as the chief had, had had mentioned were to close the gap in pay that, that our members currently have in reference to the brothers and sisters in the police department. And again, I do not begrudge them. They, they are worth every penny that they make, but so aren't our members. As the chief had stated, for four years now, we have been dealing, we've been dealing with this opiate crisis in the city head on. Our members are on the front line. Four years ago, our working conditions changed for the members of Local 789. We didn't bat an eye. We took the challenge. We accepted it and I think our members have done a fantastic job. Many lives have been saved and many, many people have, have fought the addiction and they've come out on the other end. But our members have not been compensated for that. Four years, a change in working conditions and we haven't received any type of benefit for that. So that's why we stood firm on, on the percentages that we were looking for. Not too long ago, this board approved a contract for the police supervisors for 3% over a four-year deal. We're asking for a half percent more. We're asking for a half percent more due to safe stations, due to our, our, our process involvement in that process. We, over the past, as the chief had mentioned, it's never a good time for the firefighters. End of March, we finally came to a deal after two mediations. We had mediations for over six hours with a private mediator, two separate occasions. And then we filed for fact finding. But at the last minute, we went back to the table and we were able to successfully come out with the agreement that you have before you tonight. That's a fair deal. It's a fair deal for the city. It's a fair deal for our members. As the chief had said, it's never a good time for the firefighters. We come out at the end of February with that agreement and then bam, COVID-19 hits us unexpectedly. Nobody saw this coming. It's not our fault. It's nobody's fault. But the thing that we have to remember is that our members since day one have been on the front lines dealing with COVID-19. We are going on calls every single day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, dealing with this. Our members are very concerned about bringing this back home to their families. We understand that what's going on with the, in the world right now is not, is not a good time. But we're still fighting that fight. Over the past 10 years, Local 789 has gotten an increase in pay 19.5% over 10 years. That's 1.9% that our members have received over the course of 10 years from pay raises. The last time we seen a raise of 3% was back in 2008. That's, that's 12 years that we haven't seen a raise over two and a half percent. I, I believe the time is, is now that we pass this, we approve this. We show good faith to the members of this organization that are on the front lines. As the chief had talked about a few of the concessions that we had made, the fire alarm overtime is huge. That's a huge concession that affected right now 12 individuals of this local. And we understood what the, why they wanted to do that and we, and we gave up, you know, that, that we conceded on that. I don't think I, you understand the intent, the, the importance of the concessions we made for these fire marshals exam. As the chief had said, currently, right now, farm, any member can test for fire marshal with one year on the fire department. They might not have the schooling and the education. They, our contract right now says that they have a certain time to get that education. With the new language of the concessions that this local made, that's going to benefit the, the city of Nashville tenfold because as we speak right now, our fire marshal division is already understaffed. It's understaffed and it's affecting the city of Nashville's operations because they need to get plans out. They need to get these out for people to open up businesses. During this whole COVID-19 process, crisis with the outdoor seating, they had to go and make arrangements for these, these restaurants to open their doors and allow people to sit outside and eat. So with the concession that we made with that alone is going to benefit the city way more than anybody realizes because people are going to go into that division and they're going to be ready to go. They're going to come out of the door running. Also, with the COVID-19 response, when, when this hit us back in March, Local 789's executive board, we, we, nobody's dealt with anything like this before. The governor declared a state of emergency. We met with administration. We said, what are we going to do? How are we going to handle this? What a lot of people don't understand is the local came up with a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding with the administration of the fire department to allow leniency on our current contract because we knew dealing with this crisis that contract language might have to be changed. And instead of having that conversation every time it came up, we, we established the memorandum of understanding that saying, if there is going to be contract language that we are going to change, just have conversation with the local. The local has worked, I believe, pretty well with the incident management team that was established by Chief Rhodes to handle the COVID-19 crisis. They have had to change contract language. We have allowed that to happen. Now, granted, that's not a concession for this particular contract, but I bring that up because it reiterates the seriousness of the situation we're dealing with right now and how involved our members are. Our members understood that there's, this is outside of the box for everybody, but we're willing to do what we need to do to get the job done, which we have always done. I'll end it with the members of Local 789 deserve this rate, these raises. They deserve this contract, not only because of safe stations, not only because of the COVID crisis, but because of the calls that they deal with on every day of, of the year, 365 days a year, seven days a week, they're dealing with these. We are already short-staffed. As the chief had talked about the new, the new study that's coming out. That study was done 20 years ago and it called for two additional engine companies then. So if you think about that, the increase in runs over the last 20 years, we're still doing it with six engines and three ladders. Our companies are going out 15, 20 times a day. That's one company alone, never, never mind throughout the city. I ask you tonight to approve the costs, this bargain, this collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated fairly between the city of Nashville, the fire administration and Local 789. Thank you for your time.
Are there any of the aldermen that would have a clarifying question from anyone that has just presented? Not seeing or hearing anyone. Oh.
Yeah, I was just curious. Safe stations have been brought up a lot. Is the contract permitting the fires department to continue doing it for the duration of the contract?
John, you want to answer that?
No, it did, there is no provisions to continue, whether or not we do continue or not throughout the, the length of this contract. Alderman Lopez, the, the, the half a percent that we consider the raises for the safe stations were for the previous years that we have done them, for the, for the last four years.
Do you have any plans to continue?
I, I don't know what the plan is for the city right now.
Okay.
Any other questions for any of the speakers from the alderman? Seeing and hearing none. I will now open up testimony in favor of R 20041.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor Davidson.
Thank you and thanks, thank, I want to thank Board of Aldermen for allowing us to join this meeting in this modern fashion. Still think being in the same room and seeing body language is a much better way to do business, but we have to live with the times we're in. The comments I'm going to make may sound repetitive. Repetitive from the last time I talked to you about this contract to some of the comments made by the chief and to a degree, a few of the comments made by John. This contract is not excessive. When it first came out, I was, I don't want to say chastised. I was given a little what for about the content, the contract. And I, from the very beginning, started to explain my view of why this contract was so necessary as I still feel strongly that it's necessary. The contract is getting up to the point of being on par with the responsibilities of the men and women who protect our city every day through their position as firefighters and administrative staff because they all play a role. The contract is still below other departments mean overall percentage that they have been able to get over the years. But as everybody before me has said, we're not here trying to tear anybody down. We're here trying to say fire department needs to be brought up in some fashion to the real world. I like to put what the fire department's gone through for these many years to an analogy of siblings growing up. The oldest boy or gal gets the new clothes. And the new clothes last a while. And then they get passed down to the next in line. And you say, how can you make an analogy like that? Well, the fire department over the years have sort of felt they're in the same position. Other departments go in and lobby and yet a percentage in the contract that is very, very good. And when the fire department's turn comes up, oh, we can't do that. We can't do that. We don't have enough. Now, for those of you who have been around a while like I have, you've seen it. It is not uncommon for the fire department in the past to be the second level of contracts. Now, again, this contract isn't putting it on a par with anybody. It's just giving them what they should be getting given the responsibilities they have every day for us. Been some discussion about safe station. Safe station come in several, came in several years ago. And the whole idea of safe station was very noble. As John said, we had a terrible crisis in the city back then that needed safe station type of assistance. There was a segment of our population back then that were very against this. And they didn't really realize why they were against it. They were against the issue that this was trying to correct. Nonetheless, the firemen without creating an uproar, took on the responsibility. And if you folks could see the list of what they've accomplished over these years in handling the safe station customers, you'd be as impressed as I was when I went down through it. Now, some question about what's it going to do going forward? Well, we as a city haven't made our mind up yet.
One minute, Don.
I'm sorry.
One minute.
Oh, I didn't know I had time. Sorry. In that case, I would have probably spoken earlier.
Now, keep going.
We don't know what we're going to do as a city, except that the state has come down and changed the whole process. They've created an agency in the city from eight to five. And any safe station type of need is supposed to be handled by that facility. But the question pops up, what happens after five o'clock? And until late in the morning? And what is happening is they're going to the fire station. That's going to be addressed going forward. But the firemen are still there doing their job and as has been said by others, not getting paid to do that extra work. How many of us would work over these many years doing something extra without getting any kind of remuneration? I'm sorry, I didn't know I was on a time thing here, but I do, I do want to, let me close by saying this. This, this contract is fair. It's helping the administration going forward. It is not overkill. It is not excessive. When you're thinking about doing it, think about the needs for the fire department. Why do we need them? Well, fires are obvious. And you especially want them if it's your house that's on fire. But think of all the other things the fire department does, the members of the fire department. What about the medical calls? We have thousands of medical calls every year. We don't really know about them as citizens because they happen. Somebody has a heart attack. Somebody falls downstairs. Somebody gets stuck in an elevator. Now, for me, I kind of laugh. I try to push it out the top. How many of you people want to be stuck in an elevator? Guess who comes and gets you? 99.9% of the time, fire department. What about people who are elderly and fall out of bed?
Yeah, I can ask you to wrap up, Don, if you can.
All right, I'm sorry. If I, I'll take any questions, but as I've said before, this is a very important instrument for the men and women of your fire department. Thank you.
Anyone else who want testimony in favor? Anyone else testimony in favor? I thought I heard somebody. No? Okay. Testimony in opposition?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
May I arise to ask a parliamentary question, please?
Sure.
You did not mention that there would be a time limit. And we do have two testimony favors and two testimony in opposition. Would, connection to Davidson where he may have had his, his point of view short, could he speak again in the second half of the testimony and question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I did, I did mention in the beginning of the meeting that as in all the public hearings recently, five minutes, we don't know how many people are on, how many people want to speak. And you should be able to articulate what you want to say in five minutes, but I always give the opportunity to speak again if, if somebody has a second thought, particularly if there's somebody that says something in opposition and they want to refute it. So again, if there's no one else in favor, any testimony in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none? Testimony in favor again? Mayor Davidson, do you want to finish your thoughts?
Well, yes, thank you for the opportunity. I won't ramble on, but I did mention to you my feeling, strong feeling about the need for the contract. But it's tied to the budget, you folks know that, you've got the budget coming up, so you got to keep that in mind, too. We need the contract passed, because they deserve it. But then, when it's passed, we need the funds to fund it. And you people have got to deal with money you don't have. I am very aware that the revenues for the city, and I'm aware from my past experience, the revenues for the city have been nil for about three months, compared to what it normally is. Your state revenues have gone through the floor. So when they come time to pass out to the cities and towns, they're going to be a shortfall. So you guys are really facing a real difficult problem. But we can't worry about what's going to happen in the future by handcuffing what is right now. We still need to have dedicated, professional, and needed men and women in the Fire Department. So when it comes time for the budget, you do know we're short with what do you have in front of you now. So when you take and do your considerations of the budget, I asked formally for a number of what, 500,000, which is what was cut from the budget, would do to the tax rate today, at today's dollars. 500K is 5 cents per thousand. So when we're considering are the Fire Department worth getting a good contract for the next four years, and you've got a money issue you're facing with, please remember 5 cents per thousand for the taxpayers. That's all I have, and thank you, and good luck in your deliberation.
Thank you. Anyone else testimony in favor of R 20041? Seeing and hearing no one, again, testimony in opposition to R 20041? Hearing and seeing no one, before we adjourn, is there anybody from the Board of Aldermen that has a question for Attorney Clark or Treasurer for Debt on either one of the items that we just had the public hearing on, as they will probably be stepping off the meeting? Yes, not?
I have a question.
Excuse me?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is Chief Rhodes still on?
Is, it looks like he's still on, there he goes.
Hey, sorry about that.
Sure, so I got kind of an ambiguous answer when I was asking about plans for Safe Station, because it was continually referenced, and I know that Harbor, that the Fire Station did a huge role with accepting people who were walking up, and that they were part of a greater partnership where Harbor Homes, AMR, and other partners were also working. But what are the plans for that moving forward? Because my understanding from some of the mayor's previous public conferences, that program was being downsized, and I know that the governor has altered the model.
Well, thank you for that question, Alderman. You are correct, things are changing. I think things are changing as far as Harbor Homes involvement. And I think Harbor Homes was the linchpin to the successes we had. But first and foremost, we all have to understand that we are an emergency services organization. We are not a social services organization. We have taxpayers who fund us and who expect us, and rightfully so, to respond in a timely and efficient manner to their emergency. Many Safe Station clients are from out of the city of Nashua. One of the things that we made crystal clear from day one was the need to have Nashua Fire Companies available in 15 minutes or less. Unfortunately, for the city of Nashua, the governor decided he had a better plan. And the governor never, never came to us and asked us about our program, and basically said, this is the program. I can tell you with, with 100% certainty, an eight to five program will not work for Nashville Fire Rescue. We, we cannot, excuse me, one minute. Sorry about that. Nashville Fire Rescue is not in the business of making phone calls to find an open, an open program, an open bed, call 211. That's, that's not our role. The, the role your firefighters have played for the last four years was to be caring and compassionate, and to welcome everyone into our fire stations, and made it a no judgment zone. Those were the successes of our, or I should say, those are why the Safe Station program was so very successful. It was the collaboration of the city of Nashua, the leadership of Mayor Donches, the leadership of, of Chief Stephen Galoppo at the time, the union leadership of John McAllister and his executive board. That's why this worked. Unfortunately, going forward, all of these things have been taken out of our control. And, and it, it's, I guess, I cannot, I cannot put more burden on our firefighters, because again, they are not clinically trained as social workers. They are not trained to, to go through a call tree and make four, five, six, seven calls to try to find a spot for someone to land. So, the short answer is, the future of Safe Station is very dim. And I think that, I think, I think that light is dimming by the day. And it's not by anything that we can do, because that is not something that the city of Nashua should have to bear the burden, because the state of New Hampshire is, is receiving an incredible amount of money to deal with this. But unfortunately, they never consulted us to see why our model was so successful. And again, I think you know, Alderman Lopez, your association with Harbor Homes, that's a great organization that stepped to the forefront, that has been there for us, for the city of Nashua for the past four years, 24/7, 365. And they have not let us down one iota in any of the promises they made, and our firefighters have not let us down. But if we cannot get into the pro, we cannot get into a program where we're going to put a fire company in the city of Nashua because of the activity level that we're already at, we cannot have a fire company out of service for a half hour, 45 minutes to an hour, trying to make phone calls. That, that's not the role of, 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 of an emergency service organization, so. I, I, I hope I gave you the answer you're looking for. It was a little bit, maybe more than you were asking for, but I think we have to be fully transparent here. I, I have been, I've probably been the biggest champion of the Nashville Safe Station from the Fire Department for the last four years. And it pains me to, to tell you this. But that is, those are the hard cold facts of this, and I just don't think that this should be put on the backs of our Nashville firefighters or the taxpayers of the city of Nashua going forward.
All said, Alderman Lopez?
Actually, I'd like to respond. So, I appreciate the thoroughness of your response, because it does put context to it, this is not the first time that I've seen the state redirect or rearrange something that's working really well in Nashville, particularly with Safe Station. So, your context definitely makes sense. In reference to what former Mayor Davidson said earlier, you know, would anybody do this extra work without asking for any extra pay? Actually, I did, because I was managing Maple Street Shelter for the kickoff of the Safe Station program, and it was basically dumped in my lap, I was asked, you know, are you, you and your staff willing to take the overnight overflow? People, so we were working with the after-hours element of it as well, and we were the ones that were calling 211, we were the ones that were connecting them with with recovery sites, and created the model on Harbor Homes' side. So knowing that firsthand, and the amount of work that is involved with that, it is not a role I would imagine for our firefighters to be taking moving forward. So I appreciate you making sure that we didn't have that mission creep, and our firefighters weren't being pushed in a direction where they're not really able to, to manage it. Because what our firefighters do really, really well, fight fires, and there's plenty of that, and there's plenty of concerns about it. I mean, during this meeting, I must have had 12 fireworks go off about 300 feet away. So, I, I appreciate the efforts that you guys do. I was just wondering about the context of the Safe Station, since it was brought up so many times. So thank you for your answer, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Anyone else that has any questions for Attorney Clark or Treasurer for Debt? Seeing and hearing none? Alderman O'Brien, would you please give us a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to return by roll call.
Call her all?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Lemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
Yes.
Alderman Welshire?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned at 8:02, we're going to take five minutes, and definitely the budget people stay on board, any of the other aldermen that would like to stay on? They stay on, and we'll be starting the budget meeting in five minutes.